Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. I'm John Duwanzik, and this is the regular meeting of the Avon Lake Board of Municipal Utilities. Tonight with me on the board is, from my right, Mr. Ricky and Mr. Schnabel, and from my left, Mr. Rush and Mr. Mondello. Tonight's meeting is being livestreamed on Facebook and YouTube.
I just received a notification there's an issue with Facebook, so it is only being livestreamed on YouTube.
Only being livestreamed on YouTube? If you'd like to watch us there and you're trying hard on Facebook, you know, go over there. There's an opportunity for public input on the YouTube forum in the comments section. Mr. Urunic will be monitoring that, and we have an opportunity for public input twice in the meeting, once in the beginning, once at the end. Also with me tonight, on the utility side, is Mr. Monroe, who's the Chief Utilities Executive, and Mr. Urunic, who's the Chief of Utility Operations. Also with us tonight at the table is Mr. Logan, who is the Business and Financial Coordinator, and outside counsel Anthony Coyne is with us as well. We have in the audience tonight, from what the chair can see, we have Mr. William Zimmerman, a citizen, Amy...
Gentry.
Gentry, councilwoman, Greg Mosher, citizen, and Officer Ryber from the Avon Lake Police Department. We have a full board here. It takes three votes on any motion to pass it. All votes are done by voice vote, with the exception of a motion to go into executive session, which one is scheduled tonight. That motion will be done by a roll call vote. And as I said, a minimum of three votes is required. Did I miss anything, Mr. Rush?
I believe so.
Okay. So, having gone through the perfunctory, we'll proceed into the agenda items. The first of which is to approve the minutes from the September 2nd meeting. Are there any comments on any of that from the board? Hearing none, they are approved as submitted. Next item is Public Speakers. If anyone would like to address the board at this time from the audience, we'll go ahead with that while Mr. Urunic looks at what's online. So, anyone that would like to come to the podium, you have three minutes. Mr. Mosher?
Yes. Hello, thank you. Greg Mosher, I live at 125 Ashwood Drive, and I'm a former employee... I'm sorry, speak up?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a former employee. I still disagree with the manner and the way in which I was let out. However, it has come to the point where I must forgive. So, Rob Monroe, I forgive you for what I perceive as undue action against me. Greg Urunic, I forgive you for what I perceive as horrible action against me. And it is about this as well. So, with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Anyone else?
William Zimmerman. So, I'm here to speak against the 6119. I believe this is a horrible idea. My father asked me... Or I... I'm sorry. I asked my father why we picked Avon Lake to live. Because it had its own power, had its own water, and the taxes were less because we were in Lorain County. We've lost the power, taxes are going up, and the only thing we still maintain is the control of our water. The sewer being part of that. I think this is a horrible idea to gain 4% usage from these people down in southern Lorain County. My question would be, who do you guys represent? City of Avon Lake? Or Eaton Estates down in southern Lorain County? Because the numbers I crunch and move say that 800,000, like this company Raftelis... I can't even pronounce it, I really don't care. But the point is, is that from what they show, and yet, my accountant and I crunch numbers, and we find revenue of $2.9 million. Substantial difference. Are they just making fraudulent claims to make it look like it's more important and we need to do it to bail out Lorco? Because on the books, we have $11 to $13 million that they owe us. That'll wipe away that fee. Bad business. They should make the payments. They should pay us for the services we've provided. We have all this land now, south of Lake Road, adjacent to here, that we could expand and go out and create our own contracts with all the other municipalities in this county and generate revenue for the city of Avon Lake and Avon Lake Regional Water. I don't care about people running the board. We should never lose control of this. You guys want to do 1-1-1, that's ridiculous. Mr. Schmier at least has come up with a better idea. I believe this doesn't have a chance in hell of helping the city of Avon Lake. And from my standpoint, that means it comes back on all of you, because you would make the ones to push it forward. I have no logical reason. This brings me back to Liz Cheney and her wonderful statement of, "We need to stop electing idiots."
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Anyone else? Mr. Urunic, is there anything from Cyberspace? Okay, then we'll close the public speaking segment, and we'll move on to correspondence. Mr. Monroe?
I do not have any correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with correspondence? Hearing none, we'll close that item. Next item is expenditures on your Goldenrod sheet. Sheets, would anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Ricky?
I move for approval of the expenses for Avon Lake Regional Water dated August 29th, 2025 through September 11th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, I'm Mrs. Schnabel, discussion. Mr. Ricky?
Let me find it now, I lost it. This page is turned over on Brain Industries, I think?
What number?
Try this, hang on, I gotta find it. It's a water bundle project, but it's a company that I didn't recognize for $16,000. Very bottom of...
Some of that.
Back page, sorry. It'd be under Fund 704, Item 13. Who is Brain Enterprises?
Bain.
Bain Enterprises.
Those are... That's a vendor that we purchased from before. One item, big item, is our valve exercising machine. They are a distributor for many different line items, but those are owner-supplied items, so we're not paying markup to a contractor.
Can I ask a quick question? What are we anticipating us spending on that project? I mean, we know what the contractor's gonna get. What is our cost gonna be for buying the materials? So, what's the total cost of the project, basically?
Well, we can get you an accounting on that, because the majority of everything has been purchased, like the water meters, the meter vaults, the setters for the meters, those were owner-supplied.
Okay, we bought all that already?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to just know how much we're spending out of our pocket. That's not going through the loan, correct?
Correct.
That's coming out of operating expenses.
Correct.
Just like to know what that's gonna be.
We'll get that to you.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Chair, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? I have a question on... Number 21 on Fund 701 is Pelton Environmental Products. Tell me about what's going on with the east side of basin number four.
So, for the sedimentation basins at the water plant, we've kind of gone through each one with parts that are considered wear items. Those are the chains that move the flights and collectors through the sedimentation basin to pull the settled sludge back to be pumped out of those basins. That was the last basin that we needed to do, but those were the entire chains for that flight system, so that those will be good.
By the time this series of basins is done, everything's brand new with the new parts and so on?
Correct.
Pelton, is that kin to the Pelton Wheel Turbine Company? That's a famous one with engineers, right, Amy? The Pelton wheels that power that turbine. Okay. The other one I have is... We have split a number of items between Fund 701 and Fund 721 that on these refunds... My question is, Mr. Monroe, are these individual checks or are these, like, the funds are providing funds and one check goes to the person?
Yes, it would be taken care of as one payment. But for accounting purposes, it has to be allocated to the water and the sewer funds for their water and their sewer services. So, yes, it would be one check.
All right, sounds like it would be less cumbersome than this at the end. Anyone else with any questions while we're on expenses? Mr. Schnabel?
Mrs. Schnabel? Can... I just had a question about the Leadership Lorain County, Item 16 on 701, and 721, 16 again for, it looks like for Ryan and Jason.
Yes, this is a leadership program for their professional development that they are going to be a part of a cohort. They have... There's one day per month that they attend in person, but they do... They cover a wide array of topics. And the purpose is representation of our organization in that as other municipalities, other organizations. It's not just public entities. There's from all disciplines that are involved in it. And I had encouraged them to take part in this, and they have.
Mr. Ricky?
I have a comment. I'm a graduate of the Leadership Lorain County Program, 1986. I represented United States Steel in that program. That was the second year the program was on, was in existence when I was in it. And it is a very valuable program. I still have contacts throughout names you may recognize. The County Commissioner Rydel, Gregory White, who was an attorney, was in my class, a number of... I don't want to call them shaker movers, but Maureen Cromley from Ross Environmental was in my class. It was quite an array of people, and then me, which I didn't really think I fell into the same category, but I will tell you, it is a great way to make connections in the community as well as learn about the community. We did some very interesting stuff. I'm still an alumni of the Leadership Lorain County Program. So, again, I'm way out of it, because I was... That was a long time ago, 1986, when I was in it. But I think it's well worth the money, and I would suggest that Greg think about getting into that program somewhere down the road. I think it will benefit you greatly. And I think city councils had some people in that program somewhere along the line over the years. So, again, I just would endorse that program.
You reminded me of something, Mr. Ricky. I'll ask this to Mr. Monroe. When I was early in my now 25-plus years on the board, they sent me to elected and appointed Public Officials Institute. We still do that, has everyone on the board done that?
No.
It's very worthwhile, and you could use it for your continuing education. I'm sure you went...
I went to program through Cleveland State University.
Well, you know, this was through Lorain County, but if we haven't really anybody in management or the board should be offered a tuition to that, it's not much. And you spend, I don't know, most of the winter, I guess it was, going to this, I think, twice a month. And it's worthwhile, because it kind of gives you... Council has done it too, but it kind of gives you like kind of a lay of the land, what your responsibilities and, let's say, ethical considerations are with, you know, as a result of being elected. So, I encourage us to re-up them, Mr. Monroe, if we haven't continued it, because I thought it was most valuable. I think it's called elected and appointed Public Officials Institute. Any comment from the board on that? Okay. So, we have a motion, we had discussion. Is there any further discussion? So, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Next item is supplemental appropriations, and it's time for Mr. Logan to be the star.
Thank you. Just stopped me along the way with any questions, but you can see, we have a few of them here. The fund balances are mentioned, and those are the fund balances as of the end of August. But in Fund Number 701, we'd like to appropriate a total of $300,000 over the funds you see there, accounts for care and maintenance, supplies, contractual services, and utility electric plants. Fund Number 704, which is the water construction fund, we'd like to appropriate $2.5 million. That will get us through the end of this year with the opening or the beginning of this water bundle project.
Can I stop here, Mr. Logan? This seems like a little bit of a new procedure. Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't it used to be that as long as you had the money in the account, you just...
We don't have $2.5 million in that account. This is an OWDA fund.
Well, I mean, the one before it, you do have money in the account.
Oh, absolutely.
Moving the money somewhere.
Ohio law requires public entity political subdivision to appropriate everything before you can spend it. We could have $100 million in the account, but we can't spend any of that without the appropriations. So, when the board passes the initial budget, when the city council passes that initial budget, those are appropriations that ideally, in an ideal world, they get you through the entire year for all the different expenses that are gonna come up. You've got fund balance to pay those expenses in a fund like Number 701, for sure. We want to increase those appropriations at this point in time, because we are running low in certain line items on the budget. But yes, the funds are there, the dollars are there, but we can't spend them without the appropriation.
I'm just wondering, I don't remember this step 20 years ago or whatever.
It's been around for a long...
For the last few years, we have been making supplemental appropriations more regularly throughout the budget year. For instance, when I started here almost eight years ago, they would wait till the end of the budget year and just do it one time. So, that, I think that's probably why. You're seeing this more often.
Ongoing basis?
Yes.
I was in the habit of doing it quarterly when I was Finance Director. And you have to submit to the county... I don't want to get too involved, but you submit to the county budget commission an estimated resources, what's called a certificate. And I would like to do that quarterly, so that you kind of stay with it and stay up with it. I believe the Avon Lake Finance Director now is on that same path where, you know, she wants to do these more often as they're needed. Again, they shouldn't be needed, particularly at the beginning and early part of the year. But as you go through the year, you know, there are some funds that are...
Sure, went out of budget on some things. So, please proceed. Please proceed, I interrupted you.
Fund 704, though, which is what I actually were gonna ask you about, the $2.5 million we'd like to appropriate there for the water bundle project, that will be offset or reimbursed with OWDA funds. So, the revenue side of things, where we don't need board approval to increase our revenue budget, we'll increase our revenue budget by that same $2.5 million. Fund 721, similarly, that's the sewer fund. Now, this one, we budgeted too short from the beginning of the year. Once we had our new funds in place and realized how expenses were falling, I knew that we were gonna be short with Fund Number 721. So, we'd like to appropriate a total of $550,000. But the first two line items, the salaries and the opers, that $300,000, that's actually gonna be offset with the reduction in appropriations in the next two funds, if you see there, Fund 722 and Fund 723. We're reducing the appropriations in those funds to offset that $300,000 of salaries and opers in 721. The other two line items, again, just running low on budget. We'd like to appropriate $200,000 for contractual services, $50,000 for legal fees. Fund 722, again, just a reduction in salaries of $100,000. Fund 723, reduction in salaries of $200,000. The next two funds, Fund Number 702, the Westridge Interconnect Fund, that's a reduction in debt service, OWDA payments of $47,419.26. It's offset with an increase in the appropriations in our Fund Number 706, which is the water debt service fund. We just had not enough money in the 706, but too much in 702. So, those offset. And then finally, Fund Number 762, the ETL 2 Fund, the $800,000, that is for payments from that consortium to Avon Lake Regional Water, the water plant. And part of that, or a lot of that, is a result of, if the board remembers, last December, the city cut off making payments earlier than they normally do. Normally, it's about the middle of the month, about the 15th of December, and they had cut it off about the 8th of December, about a week early. What that resulted in is some expenses spilling over into 2025, where we already had our budgets in place at the time. So, most of that $800,000 relates to the fact that there were two payments in 2025 that really related to 2024 activity. So, the total appropriation increase, a net increase we're asking for, is $3,850,000.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Logan. I do remember that change in the calendar last year, and you alerted us at that time that this would eventually, you know, come home to roost, and here it is.
This year, I think we'll be a little more prepared for it, so.
All right, Mr. Monroe?
I would just add to what Mr. Logan said is, you know, when we talk, when we look at overall budget for all of our funds, revenues versus expenses, with the dry summer that we have had, our water fund revenues are up. As we're getting ready to send out bills for that summer cycle to residential for our quarterly customers, we anticipate our revenues are gonna exceed our expenses for the year. So, even with these appropriations, we will still have a surplus, which, again, is how we build our fund balance.
Okay.
And with that, you...
Mr. Mondello?
Sorry. You said with the dry summer, so we're... You're saying basically we had a plan or budget from where we thought at the beginning?
Yes, I believe when I looked the other day, and this doesn't include the summer collections for residential, it would include our bulk customers, because they're monthly. But they, you know, we were up about 4%.
Ahead of plan?
Ahead of projected, you know?
Right.
Okay, anyone else from the board? I don't believe there's any action required.
There is. I... We didn't, in the write-up, we didn't have it. Mr. Rush does have a recommended motion.
Okay, Mr. Rush?
Thank you. I moved authorize the CUE and the Business and Financial Coordinator to make supplemental appropriations for the 2025 budget funds in accordance with the memorandum dated September 10th, 2025, and presented to the board today.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll close discussion. All in favor of the motion for the appropriations? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Logan. The next item is amendments to regulations, and there are two motions requested on this. Do we want to do discussion of the first motion-related facts and then do the vote? Or do them together?
Probably do discussion and then motion and then discussion and then motion.
Okay, take it away.
Thank you. Mr. Urunic will speak in detail, but the overview of these two amendments to our regulations, the first has to do with Chapter 3400, Section 3401.05, which is our regulations for industrial discharge limitations, otherwise known as local limits. So, I'll let Mr. Urunic discuss the details of that.
Mr. Urunic?
Thank you. So, in your handouts...
What's that?
We're all ears.
All right. So, in your handouts, there's actually two copies. As I was sitting here before the meeting, I realized that somebody had gotten a little happy with the red strike-throughs, and there was one number that was stricken that should not have been. That was the number for total cyanide. So, Ryan and Jeremy in Water Reclamation had gone through relatively recently and updated the local limits. That was kind of a learning process. That was the first time that they had done that using the EPA spreadsheet, which you input all the information and it calculates the numbers. As they went through it the first time, they did come up with a few things that they were looking that could kind of streamline the process. You'll notice that in the past, we had both max daily concentrations and 30-day averages. They weren't able to do it on the first time, but one of the things that they felt beneficial is get rid of the 30-day averages, convert everything to the max daily. Typically, most places are only sampling once per month anyways. And so, going off of that, if they kind of converted everything to that, that would just give you a way to meet your goal, one column, keep it consistent. And that way, if you do have a high result, you're not able to offset it by just doing additional sampling, say, when you weren't discharging, something that you could do to kind of skew those numbers back down. One other thing was just kind of a, I guess, a clarification. AA designation, that is something that the EPA uses to signify less than the detectable limit. For all these tests, there's kind of a lower limit as to what you can accurately detect. AA is the code that means it's non-detectable, given that number that designates how low you can detect that contaminant. So, you'll notice mercury and pentachlorophenol both have that AA designation. That means that the number just has to be non-detect, and that is your detection limit, the .2 or the .05 for pentachlorophenol. Lead was one that just moved over. Couple of the numbers are slightly higher, but like I said, these are based off of the calculations, and this was what the program has designated as the appropriate number based on the treatment plant capacity, any limiting factors there. And so, these were the numbers that spreadsheet gives you for EPA approval.
Is the board to infer that because these are given as daily concentrations that you're testing daily?
No, but that is that if you go and do a sample, there's no averaging of multiple samples. At no point can they go above that number without violating the permit.
Okay.
So, if you had a 30-day average and you came back and the result was higher, what they could do is resample multiple times later that month, and even though they had, were sending out a higher number of that pollutant, they could average it down to below what the limit was and not receive any violation. Because a lot of those that have the number in red under max daily, there was no limit on the max daily category for that. So, they would not have been in violation. They could have had a number that well exceeded what the plant would want to see at any point in time. So, they would not be in violation if they had sampled multiple times after that to try to bring that number down.
Mr. Monroe?
I... To your question, Mr. Chairman, the sampling that's done is done by... the sampling that's done is done by, we set up samplers and sampling manholes at these industrial discharges, but it's also sampling that they do and is reportable under their permits. So one industrial location, they may sample every day, but another may sample once a month. So it depends on how they're categorized, if they're a categorical user or a noncategorical.
So would you say, as a general, open to either of you gentlemen? As a general concept, this is looser or stricter than previously?
Stricter. It is, it is stricter. And, and that's a, I guess, you know, let's take nickel, for example. Prior, the current regulations, it's .35 milligrams per liter on a 30-day average. Like Mr. Jurnich stated, that industry could discharge five milligrams per liter of nickel for three or four days at the beginning of the month, and then sample themselves out to get their average below, and they're in compliance. Whereas now, they can never go over in a single day that 1.1 milligrams per liter. And those numbers are based off of the calculations that the EPA provides, provides us.
In other words, if they went over this daily concentration, they'd have to notify us. And this does not represent our discharge. This represents notification of us so that we know at the plant, you're going to get a slug of something like not so hot or hotter than it should be, but you know you're prepared for it. But this doesn't mean that we are, in any case, permitted to discharge higher amounts. This is referring to, say, Giann or whatever.
Correct.
What comes into us can't exceed these limits. And if it does, we have to be notified so that we can adjust our treatment accordingly.
And, and take enforcement. Because this, you're absolutely right. This is what is allowed to be discharged into our sewer by industrial users that comes to us. And that's so that we can ensure we're meeting our discharge permit, which is the National Pollutant Discharge Limitation System.
Okay, and Mr. Jurnich.
So those max daily numbers are calculated on what will not disrupt the water reclamation facility. So part of that spreadsheet takes into account each portion of the treatment process at the water reclamation plant. If you were to exceed those numbers on a daily basis, it would cause a disruption to the plant. So that was how those are calculated.
Hypothetically, if your company XYZ and you're, you're in a reportable situation, in other words, they call whatever number and tell us that we tested this and that, what are the penalties for having discharged excessive pollutants by somebody connected to the sewer?
I believe that's all kind of spelled out, like what we're allowed to.
There's, there's a, in our regulations, the enforcement authority, it could range anywhere from, you know, we have a, based on the severity of the discharge, we have a sit-down and discuss, moving forward, how they plan to ensure this, you know, it doesn't happen again. All the way up to there's, there's civil penalties. There's even criminal penalties in a severe case if someone was criminally found to illicit discharge to the sanitary sewer in violation of these limits. There's even, it spells out in the regulations about the authority of the board, the CUE, CUO, and how it's managed. So it is, there's a wide range. And again, it's, it's taken on a case-by-case basis. And I will say, our industrial discharge users, for the most part, are responsible. They do have upsets in their process. And I think this goes to the relationship that we have with, with them. We do our inspections, our, our sampling that we do. So they do self-report. They don't just wait to see if they get caught, so to speak.
Okay, I do remember that that's in the regulations. But if I was listening to this, you know, in the public, I would be asking these kind of questions. So I wanted to make sure that we're addressing them. So it's, it's not an open-ended thing. Mr. Ricky.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. How do, how does our regulation, how do we implement this change? Do we have to give them a notice of time or give them so much? How do we get this information out to our industrial customers? And how long do they have to?
Their, their permits are updated. So they're permitted to discharge. So when these are updated, their permit is updated, and that's how they're notified.
Okay, so they, and then, and effective that day, they're required to meet these limits?
I guess my other quick question is, I got two or three little questions. Do we have any industrial users on Lorco system? That would be pertaining to?
Yes, but Lorco passes regulations that they have to adhere to our pre-treatment standards, the same with Avon.
Oh, Avon, yeah, you're right.
We, our, our pre-treatment folks at the water reclamation facility, they will discuss with Avon or Lorco as far as if they have to have inspections and any, any of that type. So they, they follow our pre-treatment standards.
Okay. And then I guess my last question is, how typical are these compared to other waste facilities? I mean, are, you said that this takes into consideration our configuration of our particular plant. Everybody's would be different then, right? Depending on the type of system they're using and how they handle different things and what their throughputs are and everything else?
Based off of-
Is that what those equations you were talking about?
Correct.
Okay, so these aren't typical of every-
They're not going to be universal. I mean, some of them are kind of in a ballpark, but everything's going to be based off of what each specific plant can accept while still being able to meet. I forget which percentage. They don't want you right at your limit.
Which is why they call it local limits.
Yeah, mercury, lead, nickels, the, some of the big boys here are pretty typical of the ones you hear about and all the other. Every facility's probably got something similar, I would think, to what they can handle as far as-
It is, it is specific to each facility.
Okay, well, very good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ricky, anyone else? Okay, so we have two motions that are requested. The first is to update according to that chart the industrial discharge limitations. Would someone like to make that motion? I'll make it. I move to amend Chapter 3400, Section 3401.05, Industrial Discharge Limitations, Local Limits, as presented and dated September 16, 2025. May I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Schnabel, discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we're going to now talk about the Second Amendment to the regulations. Mr. Monroe or Mr. Jurnich?
Yes, I will introduce it. So the Second Amendment pertains to Chapter 6100, Section 6108, the investment of deposits. And Mr. Logan will speak to the details of that.
This really is just kind of clarifying and making it able for Avon Lake Regional Water to invest funds into Fifth Third Securities with longer maturities when that time might come. We have accounts set up now, as does the city, with Fifth Third Securities. They are municipal investment people that I've worked with in the past, and so has Mrs. Crossy, the Finance Director for the city. So a couple of changes that we wanted to make just to the sections A and B there, just, again, kind of make it clearer as to what we can invest in. And, and that, right now, all we're invested in outside of the Huntington account is Star Ohio. So we've got about 26, the utility has about $26 million in Star Ohio, which is still earning, as of today, 4.49%. So right now, the Fifth Third people know that we're not going to move any money into Fifth Third at the moment. They, their money market is four and a quarter, maybe something like that. But as rates begin to come down, and then I think within the next six months, you'll see rates start to come down, not drastically, but we can look at longer-term investments, two, three-year, we can go up as long as five years. I'm more comfortable in a two-to-three-year range with, depending on the investment type. But this will allow us to invest in U.S. Treasury bills, federal agency securities, certificates of deposit, and then the state treasury asset reserve, which is Star Ohio. The other thing that Fifth Third Securities can provide or will provide is a nice monthly statement of your portfolio, not just funds you have invested with them, but really any funds we have in Star Ohio or even Huntington. They have nice charts and schedules that kind of show everything, even though, obviously, I think the Finance Director and I are both keeping our own. But the Fifth Third schedules are really kind of nice. I think once we get into a Fifth Third investment, I can kind of show you the, the benefits of all that. But this is just to make it clear, though, that, you know, I, I still cannot physically make the investments. The Finance Director can, but I can certainly suggest. And my path for doing so, as it's been with Star, is to really go over with Mr. Monroe and Mr. Jurnich anything we want to do from an investment standpoint and get their approval and authorization before we even move to ask the Finance Director to, okay, would you please now take X number of dollars from our Star account, and we want to buy these Treasury bills through Fifth Third Security, or whatever, whatever the investments end up being, so.
Mr. Monroe.
I would just add to that. Any, any investment of those, of the funds, it would come to the board for board authorization.
That's exactly what I was going to suggest. It should be, quite frankly, written into this as part of the regulation. See where the board is mentioned as an actor in this.
I mean, the opening paragraph in 6108 mentions the board, but does not indicate that.
And talks about the city's custodian down here. We could, we could add to that, even to that paragraph, A, provided board authorization has, has been granted.
Okay, do you want to formally do that now? Put this off for a future meeting and vote on completed text? Usually, that's a better idea.
I, I believe that that would probably be the better way to do it because there, there's nothing, to my knowledge, that is pressing, that it has to be passed this evening.
I would feel much more comfortable if you would reword this. And quite honestly, you know, this business about maturing more than five years from date of purchase, that by itself, to me, would say, that's got to be a board thing, too, because the economy, do I have to mention, is volatile. And to start investing on, you know, more than even five years out seems extraordinary to me for this kind of, this has to be a very conservatively invested-
I, I would not suggest more than two or three years. We are not permitted by Ohio revise code to invest more than five years, so.
Yes, well, again, let's look at the wording of this because it kind of, first of all, it would put an individual such as yourself at greater risk for criticism if it was done without board, you know, input. Because actually, we're the ones that are, you know, responsible for it. So let's go ahead and kind of hammer this out a little more cleanly so that we're not neglecting, you know, some serious responsibility.
Yes, we'll table that motion.
Pass on the motion at this time. Not pass, not pass it, but let's table the motion. And that's probably why they use that word table, so that we'll look at it again. And again, as a general rule, first time reading of text like this is very difficult for a board, even if we've had, you know, the weekend to consider it. There's no ability for the board to discuss it among ourselves. So I would feel a lot more comfortable if we move this to a future meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
Everyone aboard in agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll go on from there without a motion. With plenty of happy emotion, but no motion. Okay, let's go on to project updates. Mr. Jurnich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the power plant update, kind of the continuation of what they have been. They're finishing up the cleanup from the demolition, organization of debris. They are still planning on being completed with this portion of the contract by the end of October. Moving on to the thousand-word section. So the last meeting, we had kind of, didn't really get a chance to go into these pictures. This picture was from just before the September 2 meeting. This is the new chemical feed structure. As I was saying, they were working on the remaining final wall with the brickwork there. And moving on to what it looks like yesterday, they have completed all of the brickwork, and they are preparing to install the roof. That's starting this week. These are the silos that will house the powdered activated carbon. That was one of the things that was kind of, when the plant was, current plant was designed in early '80s, there was not nearly the need for powdered activated carbon as we have today. It has created some scheduling difficulties because in order to accept a full delivery, we had to be lower than what I think any of us really enjoyed. These will each hold, there are 2,000 cubic feet of space inside each. To put that in perspective, about 15,000 gallons is the size of those tanks. That will give us much more storage on site. So that will be a big benefit. They're getting ready to pour the pads that those will be stood up on. But those are on-site and getting ready for installation there.
Mr. Jurnich, go ahead, Mr. Ricky.
Is there any danger, I mean, by having bigger tanks with the powdered activated carbon, is there an explosion, explosion issue with that product?
I mean, they're contained in a manner where, I mean, obviously, you're not going to be having open flames in that area. There will be signage preventing or stating that.
I'm just worried about having more on-site than what we have currently. Does that pose any safety issues? Okay, thank you.
I was going to ask you about, you mentioned somewhat pointedly that something environmentally has changed which requires greater use of powder-activated carbon. Would you care to expand on those remarks?
I believe it was in 2015 when harmful algal blooms really came widely known in this area. We still don't see the same, I guess, urgency to respond as what you would in, say, the western basin of Lake Erie. But, you know, as that situation develops, we want to make sure we're prepared for anything that could possibly come our way. Traditionally, we have seen nowhere near the levels of algal toxins that those further west of us have seen. But, you know, in the early '80s, it was typically fed. It's just a taste in odor. And they didn't really see all of the additional benefits that it has. It's something just, you know, that being the same material that's in your, your Brita jugs, those charcoal filters that are in your refrigerator, there's other benefits to the treatment process. So that's a chemical that does get used more than when that plant was designed.
Mr. Rush, larger quantities on-site. Any reaction with atmospheric cake and clumping handling issues?
It's set up, there's, I would guess you'd call it just kind of like a vibratory as you get closer to where it is fed into the system that keeps it agitated and breaks it up. Obviously, it is kept dry. So those systems are designed to be able to handle the carbon in its powdered form.
I want to pursue Mr. Ricky's point, if I may, a little bit more. This is a dry product, correct? Is this subject to some of those static discharge ignition events that companies, dry products such as grain and, you know, chaff and so on? And is it fire protection?
Yes, those have all been taken into account with the grounding and- Yes, those have all been taken into account with the grounding and, I guess, the design of the silos themselves.
We have, you know, well, I'd be interested in hearing more about that as we install it, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Because, again, you're putting a lot of money into the new plant expansion, you'd hate to have a conflagration ruin everybody's day.
Ruin everybody's day.
You know, I am aware, like grain silos and so on, and you mentioned it as a silo, so if everybody turned their head sideways to see that it'll be standing, and it's the slipping of the material against each other causes some kind of static effect, which then lets it go to the tank, you know, perimeter, which in effect causes lightning inside the tank, which, you know, carbon does burn, so.
Smart answer.
So, I'd like to hear more about that, if you don't mind, and feel free to bring in somebody knowledgeable on fire protection about that.
All right. Up here, we have the fluoride feed building. In the past, you guys may remember some of the difficulties of obtaining the Belgian-produced sodium silica fluoride. That was the only powdered form of fluoride additive that we had found to be of acceptable quality. We had tried various brands produced in China, the quality was not there, so we had specifically said in our bid documents, we would only accept the Belgian-produced product. We are now moving to the hydrofluoric acid, which is available domestically, much easier to obtain, much less expensive, and because it is in a liquid form, much easier to feed accurately at the low doses that we want to feed it. You can see on the right-hand side is the orthophosphate feed building. This was manufactured by the same company. Only difference is it's slightly taller, so that one delivery, one full tanker can fit into each of the chemical tanks inside. That has been delivered, set in place. EFI Engineered Fluid Incorporated is the company. They will be coming out to do the startup procedure, test all of their equipments, and then we will be able to implement that. This is the new filters. They're forming the final wall in the two new southernmost filters, and then they're going to begin work on the mezzanine level, the walkway that is connected to the existing filters 12 through 24. You can see one additional wall was being formed. That other one was from two weeks ago. I apologize for not clarifying that, but they're continuing their work there. That will be the final wall, and then they'll move on to the mezzanine. Kind of jump around here. This is a picture from the Water Bundle Project. This is on Inwood, looking north. Underground Utilities, Inc. has been in the DIB area, the Dellwood, Darrell, Inwood, and Belair area. So far, they've installed just under 2,000 feet of water main for new hydrants. So far, everything has been going very smoothly. They've been getting some positive feedback from residents, that UUI is keeping the area very clean, accessible, and we look forward to progressing through that project. They'll be in that area for the next several weeks. Techwin, last week, we had had Techwin staff out doing the training for our staff on the startup and maintenance of the equipment. It is currently producing about 110 gallons of sodium hypochlorite per day. For the time being, as we go through the testing and the certification process, it's being slowly disposed of at the influence of water reclamation. We want to get everything consistent. We're going to be doing, testing ourselves by a third-party lab, and then we will proceed with the National Sanitation Foundation certification, which is needed to use that chemical in our water plants. As long as there are no surprises on the third-party testing, then we will proceed with the NSF testing and work towards that certification, so that we can start using the product.
Are we currently buying sodium, liquid sodium hypochlorite? So, this will all go into motion when the completion of the water filtration plant improvements. So, when do you expect to go online with one or the other, and how much? I'll give you two questions at once. How much per day will the water filtration plant use?
So, for how much per day we would be using, I believe this is capable of meeting at lower flows, maybe up to about a little over half of our demand for the day. In the summertime, it would be about a third. Obviously, that is going to be a variable, because it's not a flat feed rate of chlorine that we would use. It depends on the water quality, but initially anyways, it would be supplemental. We would still have to purchase some sodium hypochlorite from a bulk vendor, but, you know, this is kind of more of that proof of concept. We're looking at late winter, early spring, when that chemical feed building at the water plant should be up and going.
Mr. Juranic, have we invited Ohio EPA along to taste test the sodium test hypochlorite?
Not yet. We wanted to.
They probably would be blind after they tested it. When do they, like, if we could get started, in other words, before we're actually in operation, then we maybe don't miss any days of using the product. Like, right now, we're just throwing it away, correct?
Correct. We are, but, but one of the major components right now is the data collection. We're, we're tracking water usage, electric usage, all of that, so we can quantify what this is going to cost us per gallon to produce, so that we have that, we have those numbers as we move forward to make the decision on a full-scale installation or not. As far as the use of sodium hypochlorite in our treatment process, Ohio EPA has already given us the plan approval as part of our, our project. So, as soon as the system is up and running at the, at the water filtration plant with the bulk sodium hypochloride tanks, we will be able to use the product. So, we would not have really any gap as far as being able to utilize it or not.
Mr. Ricky, go ahead.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I got to ask a question. Now, please understand my background's mechanical, not chemical, but sodium hypochlorite, NaCl2... Sodium hypochlorite?
Yes.
Right?
I think so.
Okay, versus chlorine gas, Cl2. What happens to the sodium? Are we adding sodium to the water? I mean, I, again, excuse my ignorance, but I mean, I'm looking at sodium hypochlorite over here, I'm looking at chlorine gas over here. What happens to the sodium? Dumb question from a guy who doesn't understand a lot of chemistry, but...
To make the sodium hypochlorite, you're taking salt, water, and electric.
Right.
And through the electrolysis process, it's turning it into the bleach.
Cl2.
NaCl.
NaCl2.
Right. And I just wonder, are we adding sodium to our water? That's my question.
In small amounts, yes.
In small amounts, probably.
Kind of like a natural hardness.
I mean, EPA understands that, and I just, you know, I'm just asking, how does that, how do we know? You know, I mean, maybe I'm a dumb board member, but I just ask questions that sometimes make me wonder, and I just want to make sure that, that we're not doing something else by making this change. And when, when they do these tests on this product, are they looking at the sodium, or are they looking at the chlorine? Free chlorine or active chlorine?
All of the above.
All of the above?
They're going to look at it.
Well, I'd like to understand that better, okay? And again, I apologize, I, I just, very rudimentary chemistry here, but I, just what happens to it, I would like to know.
I, I hear what you're saying. It's a good question, Mr. Juranic can get back to us. But looking at the eyeball of it, Dave, I'd say 110 gallons times 30, 330, you know, how many gallons are we putting out per day? It would be probably like your water softener.
I guess. I just, just asked the question that maybe other people would be thinking the same.
That's, that's a fair question, and I don't know the answer.
And like I say, I don't mean, I apologize if I caught you off guard, but I just would like to kind of understand the chemistry behind it.
Sure.
Related to the same system, Mr. Monroe mentioned that I would figure out how much this is costing us. Of course, I can imagine the able fingers of Mr. Logan and this, you know, adding machine like the ore on it, that he'll be amortizing the initial investment across some period of time, expected life, whatever, as part of the per gallon cost. So, it's not, we're not forgetting about that we put money into doing this, but keep in mind that our original concern was supply chain. It sounds like if Ohio EPA is already getting on board with this, that we can produce, you know, quite a bit of this material in proportion to what we need, then we're well on our way to, you know, a very successful project. Okay, sorry, Mr. Juranic, I took a lot of your time.
No.
I'll give it, you know, reclaim your time as necessary.
I believe that sums up my updates.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Juranic there? Okay, next item is CUE report, Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple items to report this evening. Our sledge hauling bid for sledge that's generated at the water reclamation facility will expire at the end of this calendar year, so we will be putting that out to bid. That was a two-year contract with an option for a third year. We exercised that third year, so that will be going out to bid, and we will have that at an upcoming meeting for the board's consideration, as well as our chemicals that we bid. If you recall, historically, we always bid our chemicals annually. During our COVID years, as we call it, the supply chain, we went to a six-month bi-annual bid. We are going to bid this contract. It would take effect January 1, and we are going to test the waters on a annual bid again. We feel that many, many, if not all, of the chemicals, we, we have seen them, the volatility in their pricing has, has settled down, so. That will be coming up as well. Another project that, that we will have ready to put out to bid here shortly is a water and sewer line project over on Krebs Road, Lear and Krebs. There is a section from Lear heading east along Krebs that there is no sewer. And so, we worked with Cleveland State University seniors in their engineering program and did a, when Mr. Gadar was here, he had started it, but Mr. Larson finished with, with them doing the design for the water in the sewer line. That is a problematic area with water line as well, that we're going to look at at renewing. Our intention is that we would put this out to bid, and this would be a cash project that we would fund. Trunk sanitary sewer fees that we've collected, and we have those in a fund, as well as water impact fees, that is, would be the mechanism to, to pay for that. The next item I have to update on is we are entering into negotiations for our collective bargaining agreement with our union members. We will be setting a date here shortly. That agreement expires at the end of the year, so we look forward to meeting with them and getting a new agreement worked out. And the last item that I have is an information item for the board. Speaking with Mr. Logan, putting together the 2026 budgets, we would like to present those to the board on October 21, and then on November 4, we would ask for passage of the budgets. It's a little earlier, about a month earlier than we typically have done, but Mr. Logan's done a nice job of having everything in place, and it would fall in line with getting everything passed by the board, so that it can be incorporated into the city's ordinance as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monroe. Any questions for Mr. Rush?
Do you anticipate a work session for that or called in front of the meeting?
Yes, the, the October 21, I would anticipate that to be a work session, where we would present the budgets and have, go over those, have discussion, and as we've done in the past, and in between that meeting and the November 4 meeting, any, you know, specific questions that board members may have about any of the budgets, they can reach out to myself or Mr. Logan, and we can, you know, answer those questions.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, members with reports or miscellaneous? Mr. Ricky?
Yes, last Thursday night, I went down to Spencer, Ohio, and attended the LARCO meeting, and it was not anything urgent came up, but the, the one thing that they will be doing at their next monthly meeting is voting on supporting or not supporting the 6119. That is going to be on their next month's agenda. It will go through a vote. But beyond that, things are rolling along with, with a lot of development down there, quite honestly. Lot of projects in the works, and should see some definite increases in numbers of homes down there in the next year, I would think. The sheet's pretty full, so that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky. Anyone else? Miscellaneous item from me, format of the board packet. We ran into a stumbling point earlier. I'm sure you noticed that we had two motions following one introduction, and really, the format of this shows you, introduction, motion, introduction, motion. That's why I had to ask what you intend here. I should have asked you that when I spoke to you earlier today, Mr. Monroe, what I neglected to, and then I tripped myself up.
No.
Okay, that's all I have. Next item is public speakers. Now's your opportunity. Anyone that would like to address the board? Mr. Zimmerman?
William Zimmerman. The meeting with LARCO, Mr. Ricky, do you have a date for that next meeting that they have?
It's the second Thursday of the month.
Thank you.
Yeah. Second Thursday of the month.
And it's in Spencer?
It's at the, what do they call it? Rural Medina Electric Company.
Or in Medina Rural Electric.
Thank you. You know it. Rural Medina Electric Company Building. LARCO has office space there.
Thank you.
It's at the border of, right on the Spencer border.
So, Avon Lake has the best water plant in the area, both for wastewater and for drinking water. We all have to have water to exist. Plants in Vermillion and Lorraine are dilapidating, and I don't believe that either city has the funds or the wherewithal to be able to make large repairs. Construction will cost them a ton. Avon Lake has the ability to expand on its own. We were told recently that there are several million dollars that we're going to put into CDs and funds and ways of making money on our money, so we would be able to use part of that money to offset the costs. This 6119 is not unofficial for the city. Citizens and myself have been paying into this company by paying our bills regularly. We're vested, interested parties. My family's been here for 65 years. We've paid our water bill every month, every quarter, whenever it came. There's no way that all of a sudden, because the county decides or has an interest in this project with LARCO down in Eaton Estates. has an interest in this project with Lorco down in Eaton Estates. We should never give up control of our product. I know Mr. Shamir has said that there should be three commissioners from Avon Lake and one from the other two entities, but I don't even believe we should be a part of it. All we're doing is giving away our services. And those of us, 25,000 citizens who live here, will be harmed by that. The gentleman at the presentation said this was a necessity. This is not a necessity. There's 100 other ways to do what they want to do. And Avon Lake should not give up Avon Lake Regional Water.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. This is chat read. Okay, then, Mr. Urenich, do you have anything online?
I do not.
Okay, then we'll move on from the public input section and move on to the request for executive session. Would someone, well, do you have any introduction to that, Mr.?
Just that request to meet in executive session pertaining to the discussion of the employment of a public employee and pending or imminent court action. Based on discussion in the executive session, the board may take formal action upon reconvening the public meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monroe. Would someone like to make the motion for executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move to meet in executive session as allowed by Ohio Revice Code Section 121.22, G1 and G3, to discuss the employment of a public employee in pending or imminent court action, and to include the CUE, the CUEO, Business and Financial Coordinator, and a representative from Manzor Gavin.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's get Mr. Mondello due the second this time. So moved and seconded, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ricky?
Yes.
Mrs. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Mondello?
Yes.
Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. We will go into executive session following the clearing of the room. Thank you, everyone who has attended tonight and or watched us online. And I don't believe the remaining part of the meeting will be online or will, Mr. Monroe?
No, not once we end the, end the stream.
Okay. Thank you, and see everyone in three weeks. Okay, thank you all.